Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Reconvene our city council meeting, December 1st, 2014. It's always good to see a large, large crowd like this. I guess every 10 or 15 years when we redo the planning and our zoning ordinance, it causes a crowd like this, but we'll try to get to everybody that wants to speak and we'll just move through the agenda. It's a very short agenda, other than that. At this time, I'd like to call on our city councilman, Forrest Fleming, to lead us with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Please stand.
Any caps, take your caps off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and please be seated.
Our invocation tonight is to be given by Reverend Carol Morgan Chaplin at the J. Iverson Riddle Developmental Center. Thank you for being with us, Ms. Morgan.
Let us pray together. Holy God, we ask your blessings on all those who gather in this place tonight. You have given us all good work to do, callings and vocations for the good of this community, and we are grateful to serve each in our own way. I would offer tonight special thanks for this community's ongoing support of the residents of the J. Iverson Riddle Center. There are many here who have volunteered and I personally am grateful for the many hours that they contribute. For this gathering tonight, we would ask for gifts of wisdom and discernment, for vision and patience. As discussions are held and decisions are made, we pray for strength and truth and courage so this time of dialogue and decision might be a reflection of the best of this community. For your faithfulness to lead in God in all times and places, we give you thanks. Keep ever before us, especially in this season of giving and receiving, places and persons who are broken and discouraged. Move us with a generosity of purpose for all who we might encourage and bless. We thank you for the many acts of love and giving already at work in our families and our churches and civics groups this season. Meals shared and toys gathered and shoeboxes filled, acts of love and welcome given to those in need. Bless each effort. Help us as individuals and families and citizens of this community to be true light in the darkness and people of goodwill in this place and beyond. Amen.
Carol, thank you. Very appropriate prayer. We'll have you back. Thank you. Introduction of our city council. On my right is Ronnie Thompson, Councilman; Forrest Fleming, City Councilman; Louis Vina, our City Attorney; I'm Mel Coen, your Mayor; Sally Sandy, our City Manager; Sidney Simmons, our City Councilman; John Cantrell, City Councilman; Kelly Russell, Recording Secretary; and Becky Brinkley in the corner interpreting for our deaf community. At this time, I'm going to ask Brian L. Christie, Public Safety Retired Officer, to come to the podium, and I'm going to read a resolution and I will present to him. Resolution honoring Brian L. Christie. Whereas Brian L. Christie was employed by the City of Morganton as a Public Safety Officer trainee in the Public Safety Department on April 12th, 1993, completed field training and promoted to Public Safety Officer on July 3rd, 1993, promoted to Public Safety Officer II on June 15th, 1998, resigned employment with notice on May 4th, 2001, and re-employed as a Public Safety Officer in the Public Safety Department on June 13th, 2005, promoted to Sergeant on June 21, 2007, and promoted to Captain on September 3rd, 2012. And whereas Brian L. Christie has faithfully served, the City of Morganton and the Public Safety Department has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 12 years and 6 months. And whereas Brian L. Christie retired from the City of Morganton as Captain in the Public Safety Department on December 1, 2014. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Brian L. Christie and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Brian L. Christie, adopt this the first day of December, 2014. Mel Coen, Mayor; Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Making the form of motion, guys.
Second.
All right, have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Brian, I got two checks for you, so this honeydew stuff that I talked about with you today, you're going to be doing, giving this to her probably to make the deposit. Good luck. You're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Just one more. Thank you, guys, for having the faith in me to keep me employed for this long, and I hope I've done the job you've expected. And I'm not going anywhere, so if there's anything I can do for the city, I mean, you've been good to me. I hope to be good to you in return in the future, so if there's anything y'all need, all you gotta do is call.
Thank you, Brian. This is going to be the consideration for the award of the service weapon and the helmet, fire services helmet. I make a motion to adopt a resolution honoring, I've done that, motion to declare a surplus Glock Model 22-4 General-4 Semi-Automatic Pistol, serial number XHY480, and the Fire Services Helmet to sell and present to retired Captain Brian Christie.
So moved.
Okay, have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'm going to pay you dollars so you can have that.
It's one of the few city managers I ever have. Thank your family for being with you. Captain Lottlemilk here?
Yes.
Here's the pen. You got a pen?
Do we have the pen? Oh.
No.
I'm sorry, you did not get it.
Tony? Where's Tony? Tony, we'll have to present it to you, but Tony has been with the Public Safety Department. He's a captain, been with our department for 20 years. Thank you for being with us. We'll give you a pen later. If we hold it 10 more years, it'll be 30. Ms. Edith Chris.
Yeah, before they leave. Hey, guys, can y'all stay here for a minute?
Major.
Everybody.
Just one second. Ms. Chris has some kind words to say.
I am Edith Chris of 716 East Union Street, Morganton, North Carolina. I wish to speak on the attention given me the first October's meeting to the Public Safety Department of Burke County. To the Public Safety Department of the City of Morganton, I wish to congratulate them, recommend them, and to give them much honor tonight. Tonight, I feel it most appropriate with all of them standing around me because I know they have been concerned with my last complaint I had in October. So I wish to congratulate our safety department, our policemen, our chief, recta, and Major Bradshaw for the attention they have given Burke County, Morganton, and my attention on the problem that was disturbing me very much and have been. I wish to say that their job is being fulfilled in the attention and the service they render. I have always felt that Morganton takes care of its business and the meaning that at their jobs, no matter what time of the night or day, they have answered the calls that I have made, and that has been many. All right. Tonight is no better time to give them honor and compliment them on the jobs they do in Burke County and the City of Morganton. I wish to compliment all of them. Our police are on the job every day because I watch out the windows where I live to see that they are doing their job. If I call, then they are, day or night, no matter what time of night, that could mean 3:00 a.m., they are there. And I feel very protected tonight with all of them standing here. But that takes care of every night that I call, they come. And I wish to just thank Morganton for having such a staff of policemen and giving them some honor too, because the police come whenever the mayor, not, sorry, whenever the Major Bradshaw doesn't come, the policemen are on their jobs.
Thank you, Ms. Chris.
I wish to thank Morganton for such a great job that they are doing in protecting our street, East Union Street.
Your words are recorded, and we appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be careful.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jen. Thank y'all. Want to mention something before I get into some more public advocacy issues and strategies, but there's been a little bit of talk about Tier One and Tier Two. You know, Tier One is the lower echelon, and I'm going to let Sally explain it a little bit better, she knows how to say it a little bit better. It's the lowest echelon in the rating from the Commerce Department for a community, and it's based on population, based on a lot of issues, poverty and situations like that. Well, we just got elevated to a Tier Two community or county just in the last few days. Tier Two, now, of course, we won't be getting the same benefits when we have an industry come to Morganton, won't be able to give the same incentives. They'll be a little bit lower than if you were a Tier One county, and Sally can fill in the holes. Sally, go ahead.
Basically, the Commerce Department has three tiers, and they rank all 100 counties in the state. And Tier One are the most economically distressed counties based on a formula. Tier Two are the middle economically distressed, and the Tier Threes are like the Mecklenburgs and the Wakes and the Guilfords and those guys. We were just placed on January 1, 2015. We will be elevated to a Tier Two, so that means we're moving out of the most distressed category and into the middle category. And in large part, that has to do with the unemployment rate that has dropped and some population changes, but it's a move in the right direction.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, Christmas Parade, December 2nd, 2014, that's tomorrow, by the way, at 6 o'clock, and we'll be stepping off. Breakfast with Santa, sold out, two Saturdays, I think it is, completely sold out. Special Holiday Farmer's Market Saturday, December 13th on Green Street. City Halls closed Christmas holiday, December 24 and 25, and New Year's Day, January 1st of 2015. And we have a City Hall Workshop on February 20th in this room, in this room, all day, Friday, the 20th. Power agency, Sally? Oh, I'm sorry, Eric Bowman.
Please get something in.
With our 2014 audit.
Thanks, Mel. I just wanted to reiterate some of the things, particularly to your council members, on what we're hired to do. We're essentially hired to render an opinion on whether or not the city's financial statements are materially correct. That's our main purpose. And as you know, these reports are prepared by Karen Duncan, and then after we have audited those, we send them to the local government commission for their approval. They're just one user. We have other users, such as investors who buy bonds, and all those people are looking for what we call a clean opinion. And the city has always received a clean opinion from our audit firm. That gives anyone who uses those statements confidence that those financial statements are correct and they can rely on them. One big misconception is that we're hired to find fraud. We are not hired specifically to find fraud. If we find fraud during our procedures, then we do have to deal with it. But I did want to point that out because a lot of people say that, you know, that's the only thing we're hired to do. It's not, we obviously cannot check every single transaction, that would be cost prohibitive. One of the big things we do is we get an understanding of the city's internal controls because that's the main thing. Tighter your controls and better off everything is. And the city has good controls, and even though the city's controls are extremely good, any controls can be circumvented through collusion or other things. You can look at Target and recognize that those things happen. We just live in a different world now. 10 years ago, 5 years ago, we didn't really have to have these worries over cybercrime and all this other stuff. So because of that, and because the city's finances are so complicated, we made a recommendation in the report that the city hire an internal auditor to give you another level of comfort that a city doesn't think they can afford an internal auditor, and we think they can't not afford it, so that's just one of those things because we are so uptight about internal controls. The city's finances, as we talked about before, are extremely complicated. You've got cable, you've got electric, you've got internal service funds, you've got a lot of grant programs that other people don't have. And we are pleased to say that the city's finances are, our records are in real good shape. Makes it so much easier for us as auditors. Compliment Karen and her staff for that. And finally, you know, it's probably approximately a six-week job for us. Three of those weeks, we're physically at the city's premises every day, day in, day out. And anybody would get tired of anybody after three weeks, much less auditors. But I really appreciate the cooperation we get from the city staff. They've got their job to do, and they got to stop and answer our questions and those type of things. So we really appreciate that. That's why we enjoy this job, not because it's so complicated, but because of the good people working here. As far as the actual numbers in the report, I'm going to let Karen go over those with you. When she's through, you can ask whatever questions, we'll do the best we can to answer them. But I did want to just kind of lay out what we do, you know, as best as, or as simple as we can, try to explain what we do as auditors.
Thank you, Eric. Karen, pull the microphone up just a little, if you would. There you go.
You won't have a hard time hearing me.
I hear you.
In more ways than one. It's certainly my pleasure this evening to present our annual financial report. I am very grateful for all the people who came to here tonight. I know that they're all here just to hear my presentation. As Eric said, and where we want to start out, is that we did get an unqualified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is what we have to have as a local government. And what that means is just as it's stated and as you can see on the screens, it means that the financial statements of which you have already been given copies present fairly in all material respects the city's financial position. So I included lots of colorful charts because it's just more fun to look at something pretty than it is just to look at numbers. So what I want to do is talk a little bit, and I promise I'll talk not too terribly long, about what you see in front of you. So the first slide here is citywide revenues and financing sources. And probably what I want you to see graphically here is the very largest part of our revenues, which is 50% of our revenues actually come from cable. They're in purple.
Electric.
You said cable.
Did I say cable? I must have cable on, wouldn't that be something? I think electric would be a better, a more accurate statement. Okay, I just gave you, you know, great kudos, Bill. 50% of our revenues do come from electric sales, and then the others break down. 28% of our revenues are from the general fund. Water and wastewater are each at 8% of revenues, and cable is actually 6% of revenues. Expenditures likewise break down where 51% of citywide expenditures, 51% are from electric, 29% of those are general fund expenditures. Water and cable are 7%, and wastewater 6%. So you can see that obviously cable, water, and electrical are pretty similar in both the revenues and their expenses. I thought I'd throw in here just a quick glance for you to look at where we are when you look at three years. And as what you can see there is our revenues have grown just a little bit, and our expenses also have grown just a little bit. And remember, we had a slightly larger capital plan last year, so that would be probably the biggest reason why we've seen a little bit of growth in the general fund expenditures. Whoops. Okay, so more specifically, you can see the kind of revenues that we have in the general fund. And of course, all this is detailed in the CAFR and the 100 and some page report that you have copies of, that I'm more than happy to go page by page through as soon as, if any of you would like me to. But what's probably here in front of you are kind of the highlights of that. So what you can see there is that of the general fund revenues, only a little over 8 million make up our ad valorem taxes, our property taxes. And that's somewhat of a misnomer. I think a lot of folks believe that a much larger part of our general fund revenues come from taxes. It's not the case. 49% come from ad valorem taxes. The other taxes and licenses, which are things like sales tax, franchise tax, that's 19% of our general fund revenues. 11% come from unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, and 4% come from our restricted intergovernmental revenues. And if you start on page 19 in the book and go forward, you can actually see line by line what revenues make up these categories. 15% comes from sales and services. That may be common tickets, it may be food sales, a community house, recreation revenues, and then the other 2% are the smaller combined revenues, permits and fees, unfortunately investment earnings, and just some other small restricted revenues. And again, here's a three-year snapshot for you, which shows, again, just a small growth in tax revenue. Other taxes and licenses has stayed, just slightly decreased. And there in front of you, you can see the others. The unrestricted intergovernmental revenues is up slightly, just barely. Our restricted intergovernmental revenues are down, and sales and services is, again, pretty close to consistent. Our general fund expenditures and how that breaks out, of course, the largest function that, in terms of dollars, is public safety, and that represents, 42% of the expenditures we spend in the general fund go towards public safety. 23% go towards culture and recreation. 17% go to general government, which is administration primarily. 8% to transportation, and then 5% is debt service, which is how we pay our financings. There is no bonded debt in that. Again, if you had, there's a peak for you, which tells a story of where we've been with lots of different bars. And I guess the most important thing there to kind of see is, well, one, you want to remember that there is capital in those numbers, which kind of counts for the swings, because what we spend from year to year obviously changes depending on what our needs are, and all we need to do is add a fire truck or a large leaf truck, and all of a sudden, the number's going to jump quite a bit. This is available fund balance, and accountants love to use big words, myself included. So one day, I had one of the councilmen, Councilman Fleming, who kind of asked, well, just Karen, how much money can we spend? And so I thought that this might be a helpful slide to put in there. And, because what we know is, in accounting, we call it unassigned fund balance, that's the big number you start with. But then you got to take away all the things that are things you can't spend, that you got to put the money in savings for. And so what you're looking at here is over three years, how it shifts and how it changes. We start out, unassigned fund balance is kind of like a checkbook balance. It's how much money you got in general. And the appropriated fund balances, every year, you know, we go through budget, we decide if there's how much money out of that proverbial checkbook balance we want to put towards the following year's expenses. Means that we don't anticipate revenues to sustain us through our expenditures. And then, of course, at the end of the year, we have outstanding contracts, you know, or items ordered that just haven't come in yet, but we know when they come in, we have to pay for them. And then the council has put forth a policy, or adopted a policy, that we should always reserve 15% in our reserves. So by the time you add and subtract all those numbers, what's important to see is we ended up, at the end of 2013, we had a whopping $83,000 that could be appropriated once we subtracted out all of our commitments and where we thought our savings should be. And this year, that number has jumped to $1,319. So that's a pretty, that's good. It's not a lot of money when you think about a $70 million budget, but at least it's going in the right direction this year. So now I want to quickly move to the proprietary funds, which are our utilities. And what that tells us again here is that 70% of just the utility revenue comes from the electric fund. Water is 11%, wastewater 10%, and cable 9%. Again, the three of those really are very similar in size and dollars. And there you see a, you can track the history there for a three-year period. And, you know, what I would point there is, with the exception of cable, all the utilities' revenues were slightly up last year. And we'll move just real quickly to expenses. 72% of the utility expense belong to the electric fund, and of course, you know, the biggest part of that is our purchases of power that we purchase and resell, obviously. And then 10% from water, 9% from wastewater, and 9% from the cable fund. Then we go on and we look again, and you can see there has been some growth in the expenses in the last year. And again, primarily, that came from an expanded capital program. And so, to that point, I'm happy to answer questions. I will say, in just terms of a bottom line, and that we did make money last year. I think it's pretty amazing in the general fund, almost a $20 million general fund, that we ended up with making $95,125. I think that's pretty close to just nailing it almost perfect. I think that's pretty incredible. And our utilities collectively profited about 1.8 million. So we had a good year. And now, I am happy to answer any of your questions about our financial condition.
Karen, I want to compliment you and your staff.
Thank you.
Doing a fabulous job.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about the standard and poor rating, because we've got a captive audience, as you know, they can't leave.
I know, I'm loving it, you know?
And then you've got all those people at home watching us.
Well, we're really proud this year that we recently had our standard and poor's rating increased to, they bumped it up two notches to a double A. The highest rating you can have is a triple A, and that's kind of what the state of North Carolina has in really big places, the Mecklenburg Counties and Wake Counties and Guilford Counties. So for a city our size, a double A rating is pretty phenomenal and exciting. And what that means for us is that it proves stability, in the same way that somebody might go, if you're getting ready to buy a toaster, you might go to Consumer Reports and read up on who had the best toaster. So if you're getting ready to buy bonds, you might well look at standard and poor's ratings and see, just check the creditworthiness of the entity to decide whether or not to sell bonds. You know, we're about to pay off the city's bonds in this fiscal year, but we may at some point choose to sell bonds again, and that's when it would be most significant. But even with our small financings, our installment financings that we do, we did three of them in this past year, our standard and poor's rating helps us. You realize that we financed over $1 million, and each one of those financings was under 2%. They were in the 1% range. And that comes from the banks looking at our creditworthiness and at the leadership, of course, the council provides in making sure that we stay financially sound. Is that helpful?
It is helpful. I'm very proud to be a mayor and a city councilman in a town that has a double A.
Thank you. Me too.
Thank you.
Are there other questions?
John, you got a question on the table?
John had that look on his face.
No, it's one being counted to another. Thanks, Karen. Thanks for a great job. Thanks for a great job.
Thank you. I couldn't do it without an amazing staff, and again, the leadership, an amazing boss, and the leadership that all of you provide to us.
Well, one good thing about Karen is, I know she's looking over your shoulder, and Eric's looking over.
Both of our shoulders.
So again, we feel very, very secure.
It's a real team effort.
Everything here is a team effort.
And when you really think about last year's numbers, and Karen's talking about a twenty million-dollar budget, and we hit that within ninety-five thousand dollars with a lot of unknowns, that also goes back to your department directors and the folks who are managing those budgets. And I think they deserve some credit for handling that, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric, for being here with us. Municipal Power Agency Sally, talk about Dan.
Good news to report. We had the election, and Dan Brown, the retired electric director from Morganton, was elected to the Electric City's Board. He will serve a three-year term. He was in the office today and is looking forward to that. Lexington's Mayor Noel Clark was the other individual who was elected to that board. So we're proud to have Dan serving on that. He will represent the interest of the whole agency as well as the city, I think.
Very good. Consent agenda, Sally.
Consent agenda before you tonight actually has four items included. Would ask that you consider approving those in one motion, unless someone would like something removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, the first item is approval of minutes, and we have minutes from the regular meeting of November the third, and also the closed session minutes that you all have had a chance to review. Tax releases, three hundred and nineteen dollars and seventeen cents. The second reading for the application of taxi cab franchises for next year, and then an ordinance cleaning up some language with Morehead Street Extension and Morehead Street parking and signing, just cleaning up some language that really doesn't match up with how that is signed in that area.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Public hearing. Public hearing on the proposed new zoning ordinance and zoning map for the city of Morganton. I'll open up the public hearing. And I will let Louis tell us a little bit of the ground rules, because there's a good bit of people, a lot of people here.
There are indeed a lot of people, I'm guessing, that most of the people here are concerned with this first public hearing. As you know, council has adopted a policy on the conduct of public hearings, which, among other things, includes a time limit per speaker of three minutes unless council votes otherwise. Given the importance of the issue with the new zoning ordinance, and given the large number of people here who may wish to speak, I inquire whether council may wish to amend for purposes of this hearing only your time limitation. Keeping in mind, a lot of people probably want to speak, but, you know, we do have a limited amount of time. Is there any wish to change your policy?
I think we can go along, and if someone needs to speak a little longer, can tell us that they need to go a little longer, and we'll waive it at that time. I think you can get most of your business done in three minutes.
And may I add one other thing? We do have also, in our policy, a rule on multiple speakers on the same issues. If you've got a group from a neighborhood or for a particular issue that all want to speak on the same position, if you could, try to designate one or at most two people to speak for you, rather than having a parade of people all say basically the same thing, if you can.
Now, remember, the mobile home part of the ordinance is going to be, mobile home park, part of the ordinance is going to be discussed by a group of individuals that have been appointed. Don't know that they've met yet, but they will be meeting shortly. So I want you to realize that we don't, we're not going to talk about that part of the ordinance at this time, because it really, we're using the old ordinance right now on the mobile home park. Okay. Now, anyone wishing to speak? Lee, first, you might want to, you want to give us a little overview, or you want to get right into the nitty-gritty?
I don't want to stay here all night. But briefly, just as a general overview, fourteen months ago, we started this process. And anytime you tackle a new zoning ordinance, it's going to be a challenge. There's a lot of folks involved in this process, and it starts back from your long-range land development plan, Mission 2030, four or five years ago. Your land use regulations should follow the overall goals and policies of the city. And through the public hearing process, the workshop process with the planning and zoning commission, and with the help of benchmark planning, Aaron Burris and Richard Smith are both in the audience tonight to assist us with this public hearing. We have developed an ordinance that we feel very comfortable in presenting to you. Planning Commission has recommended this document to you unanimously. I do want to compliment the hard work and effort that went into this by the Planning Commission members. We spent the past thirteen months in workshops. We would sometimes go two or three hours at a time going through this chapter by chapter. And so their diligence and attention to detail and the discussions that we had were very open. The city attorney was in the majority of the meetings to help us through the process. And so we hoped, we've had an open process. We have been on the city's website since May of this year. There's been numerous articles and discussions. There was a public forum that was held, where we had computers set up in this room and maps that folks could come in. We've invited people numerous times to come and speak at the public hearing process. We've, we had an open forum website that you could submit requests for changes and questions directly to the staff. And we worked very hard to respond to each one of those questions, and we made multiple changes throughout the process. Up until the last few days, we've been making changes to the maps as we find things that are inconsistent with the plan and the policies that, that the Mission 2030 Plan recommended. And this process, hopefully, will not stop changing. Zoning ordinance are adaptable. Anything that you adopt this evening can certainly be amended, but we do feel comfortable that, that what we're offering meets with your economic goals, with your tourism goals, with your beautification goals along major corridors, with protecting the downtown and the central business district, to provide alternatives in our neighborhoods to encourage economic rebirth in some of the areas that we've seen in decline for many years. We feel like it's a document that provides a lot of flexibility to our developers and to our landowners. It certainly is not something that is just going to allow anything. It does provide folks an opportunity, if you do more, you get more. And that's kind of the overriding theme of this ordinance, is to protect and be responsible in the developments that you do, but to also reward those developers with an easy and administrative process that does not require a lot of public hearings and a lot of public debate. If you can present a good plan for development to streamline that process and get you permitted as quickly as possible, because in today's economic conditions that we have, time is money, and we recognize that. And that's, that's something that Mission 2030 said, that we all have to do it together. It's not just an ordinance that creates economic development, it's all the other groups that are involved with that process, and this is just one piece of that puzzle. And hopefully, we've done a good job at that. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you have and the folks in the audience have. And we can bring up maps and sections of the ordinance if any particular sections are requested for more information.
Thank you, Lee. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's up to y'all. Come to the microphone one at a time and state your name and where you reside, and we will try to do our best to deal with your concerns.
Members of the council, I'm John Green. I reside at 124A Ridgeway Terrace. My family has owned and operated an automobile dealership in Morganton through three generations since 1941. I don't plan to take very long to do this, but in the ordinance, under section 5.5 and then item 5.5.10, it deals with pennants or streamers. And it says, "Pennants or streamers are flags consecutively strung together to attract attention or prohibited." Well, that's why we use streamers, to attract attention. We're situated on Jamestown Road. We've been out there for about fourteen years now. And I think that Mission 2030 designated Jamestown Carter as the auto row for Morganton. Now, there are two dealers out there, and the other two franchise dealers in Morganton have recently completed expensive renovations, and I doubt that we will see them moving out there anytime soon, but there's always a possibility that some new franchise might come in as our economic situation improves. I took the liberty of researching sign ordinances through my North Carolina Auto Dealers Association. And I spoke, I've spoken a couple of times with our staff attorney. I have a sign here from a community about two hours away from here that has a population of about twenty-five thousand, which makes them, I think, about eight thousand larger than us, but nevertheless relatively small or medium-sized. And they start their comments on their sign ordinances, "It's the general intent of this ordinance to prohibit signs of a commercial nature in districts which commerce is barred," or barred. I certainly believe in that. I don't want pennants on my street or streamers. But on the other hand, they go on to say that these are permitted. Outdoor inventory signs professionally made. Now, we use professionally, we do have streamers on our lot, and they're in a, they're in the form of sort of forming a tent-like atmosphere. Outdoor inventory sale signs professionally made signs, banners, pennants, flags, streamers, balloons, or other wind-blown devices may be displayed on commercially or industrially zoned lots where ninety-five percent of the standard inventory is located out of doors. The lot must contain a minimum of one and a half acres. Well, there's nobody in Morganton, no franchise dealer, that has any less than that. And I have no idea what the other dealers intend to use, but such signs will not be located in a public right-of-way, and there's no limit to the number of such signs. An outdoor inventory sale sign, except strings of pennants and streamers, shall not exceed a hundred and fifty feet per device. And the height of signs is limited to the restrictions of the zoning district where they are located. Balloons may be firmly attached to stationary object but may have a maximum tether height of thirty feet. I'm not particularly advertising balloons. I don't believe I want to put up balloons. But yes, we'd use pennants, and we have. When we moved to Jamestown Road, at that time, the traffic count on Jamestown was eleven thousand cars a day. I don't know what it is today. Lee may know. I didn't take the time to check, but I have an idea that it's more in the past fourteen years. A lot of those people on Jamestown Road are headed out of Morganton West to Asheville or somewhere, and they might buy a car up there, but if we can turn their heads a little bit as they go by, they might come in to see us. So I just, I would just like to see the ordinance structured in such a way that it was not Thank you.
John, I talked to Lee the other day, or yesterday, I guess, no, last week, about the streamers. Your preference would not have streamers prohibited in our ordinance, is that what?
Right.
Lee, is that a problem? I make a motion that we allow streamers, and Lee, you have, I mean, you've got to clean it up, what I'm saying, in the ordinance.
May I, may I suggest that procedurally, if we can make note of these and any other changes, we're in the middle of the public hearing, and then at the end...
Change them all at one time?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay, that's fine.
If we can sort of keep track of them.
Thank you.
You may not have to hang around.
We'll keep a list.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
He's a new car dealer, and I'm a used car dealer, so I don't think I need to make my speech now, Mal.
You really don't.
Are you a dealer?
Yeah, you really don't.
Beautiful speech, I worked it out.
I know you did.
I'm sure it'll be a reasonable thing, Mal.
No, your daddy probably wrote it for you.
No, no, no. You don't need me to talk to you.
No, no. We'll take care of it.
Hold it, Bill.
I've also got a pro-business stance to make for a client of mine, and if I can, to give you a visual, I've got...
You need to introduce yourself, Alan. I'm sorry.
I'm Alan LaCroy. I'm a local attorney, and I'm here representing a client. I'm representing Coffee and Son Nursery. Mr. Roger Coffee is here, who's the principal owner of that business. And I'd like just to pass out a visual. I've got copies, overview of the property, so you can look at.
I've got, that's okay. I've got it already.
We can shoot.
If you'll look at this with me, this is a, this is a twenty-seven-point-nine-five-acre tract owned by Coffee Nursery, which is located in the upper portion. That is Fleming Drive up to the top, and then that is his property, which stretches the entire corridor of Fleming Drive all the way to, I guess that's Stone...
Stone Bridge.
Stone Bridge Drive. And then you'll see Bethel Road framing down here at the bottom. His property is that upper property up there, and it is used as a nursery here in this, here in this town. It's been used since 2003. Under the current zoning ordinance proposal, it is basically what's termed legally as a bona fide farm. And under the proposed zoning ordinance, it would be in a neighborhood conservation overlay, the South Forest subdivision there below it, and he would no longer be permitted to farm this property under the zoning ordinance. It would be an illegal use. We're asking you to remove this twenty-seven-point-nine-five-acre tract from the neighborhood conservation overlay. Of course, it's, it, it can, it's all resident, it's all low intensity around there, but it's the overlay that's the problem. And why is this important? This business is not just trees and bushes. It actually, and Mr. Coffee has given me numerous documents to prove this, they spend several hundreds of thousands of dollars in our community, in Burke County. He has nurseries in other counties, but this is one of his largest. This is the highest and best use of this particular piece of property because it is, it is in a floodplain. It cannot be a, it cannot serve residential purposes at all. The problem that the zoning panel was dealing with is there's been some complaints, its only access currently to the public roads is through the South Forest subdivision roads. About three weeks out of the year, in two different periods of time, there are some pretty large trucks that have to come in through that subdivision to bring trees in and to take trees out and bushes out. However, it's not an everyday thing. It's during the planting season, and it's at the season that they harvest. Those are the only times that that occurs. Mr. Coffee and his business has been, I believe, diligent in working with the city to try to address those problems. And I want to commend Mr. Anderson and his staff. They've also been very helpful in suggesting some alternatives about, about better access. One of the access points that's being discussed is actually this piece of property, which is owned by the city, which is over to the right against Stone Bridge Drive, if you see that area. One of the problems that they have is there's also a very large creek, Hunting Creek, that runs through this property. And that is really the only access point now is at One's Branch Court, which is, which is right there. However, even, even working that out, I mean, the Coffee and Son's Nursery is dedicated to working that out and addressing the concerns of the neighborhood and continuing to work with the city in that, in that regard. Still, we're asking you, this twenty-seven-point-nine-five-acre tract needs to be removed from the neighborhood conservation overlay. I've written Mr. Vinay a letter about this. I would ask you to question him about it when you meet about those types... I would ask you to question him about it when you meet about those type of legal matters. I've addressed some of the laws related to this and some of the difficulties I think it could pose. This business would stand to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars, in my legal opinion, if you do not remove it from the neighborhood conservation overlay. I believe the concerns, the neighborhood can be addressed, the access concerns in other ways. And I know Mr. Coffee and me on his behalf are dedicated to addressing those concerns in a, in a, in a problem-solving way. But we're asking you now, when you vote on this ordinance, we ask you to amend it, to remove this tract of land from the neighborhood conservation overlay. The zoning is fine, the low-intensity zoning is fine, but please remove it. I would, I would, I would suggest that leaving it in the neighborhood conservation overlay may be impermissible spot zoning, and is something that may, could lead to some type of court challenge, which certainly Coffee and Sons Nursery does not want to happen in any way. They, they love this city. They love what the city has done for its business and for them personally. We would ask you, this is a good business, and it's doing good work in our community, and it's the highest and best use of this particular piece of property. Please allow it to remain. Thank you.
Have a, I think Mr. Thompson here, I was told, I don't know for sure, has a copy of this. Went around, and we would like to be put into the neighborhood conservation zone of 200 Block Wilson Drone in Conley Street. Above us, 100 Block is in the conservation group. The zoning's fine, no problem about that. We just are asking that you extend the conservation zone. If you'd like this, we, do you have a copy?
Is that the petition?
Hmm?
Is that a copy of the petition?
Yeah.
Everybody has that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you heard.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Lee to make some comment about that, please. If it's moved, does that affect their property values or...
Can you also, in your packets, guys, you have a map that was put there today that shows the, what that change would mean, looking at the map?
The particular area that, that they're referencing is Zone Medium Intensity, MID. It's on a neighborhood street, which carries with it some, its own restrictions. You can't do but a certain amount of development on those type of streets under this new ordinance. You'll notice on the map that's in front of you, Chad, if you'll bring that up on the screen, there are different categories of roadways. You see the blue being major thoroughfares, the green being minor thoroughfares. Then you have some orange sections of roadways. Those are collector streets. For example, St. Mary's Church Road, I have my pointer on, is a collector. And then other streets in general, in the neighborhood areas are really residential streets. So depending on what type of street your property is fronting on, this ordinance limits the type of development that can occur there. In the Conley Street area, this particular area, the underlying zone is MID. This is all this orange area, goes all the way to Interstate 40, and then changes color. You can see this line, I don't know how well it shows up on the map, but right along Burkmont Avenue, where the major thoroughfare, this is high intensity. So a lot of your commercial activities, industrial, fabricating, about anything you can, you want to do is allowed in this district. Right behind that district, it changes to a, to a medium density or a medium intensity district. That allows some small businesses, if, if it is located along a major, minor, or collector road. Hopple Road is really the only collector road in this area. So only properties fronting Hopple Road would even have a chance of being developed for commercial activities, okay? You couldn't develop a commercial business on Conley Street or off of Conley Street. You could do a home occupation business maybe on there if you had a professional office or something like that, you wanted to operate out of your home. But as far as an independent business, you couldn't do that. Now, the neighborhood conservation that they have asked for, this map has been slightly adjusted since the Polanin Commission public hearing. Star Mount Circle used to be under a neighborhood conservation area, which it still is. It was, but this area where Conley Street is was not. The area across the street where Barber and Wilson Drive and then Henry Don Road changes zoning classification. That's a low-intensity zoning classification, also under a neighborhood conservation area. So that restricts it to single-family uses only, really. Most of our single-family, well-developed neighborhoods that are, that are fully developed for that purpose fall within that category under neighborhood conservation. Now, it carries some restrictions. You can't do agricultural-type uses, which the previous speaker asked for. So you can't do intensive home occupation uses. You can't do duplexes. You, you have some design restrictions if you were to build on a vacant lot in the neighborhood conservation areas. There's some building material restrictions and things in those areas that you can't put next to another property owner. Whether you're in an MID or an LID, if you're in neighborhood conservation, the same rules apply to you, okay? They don't distinguish between those two. So what we've done is we extended the neighborhood conservation area, overthrew these little single-family houses on the Conley Street and the Wilson Street, but leaving out the properties along Hopple Road. And this is actually one large tract. We split that, that tract. And so this area could develop as perhaps multifamily, but this would have to be single-family, which is a little odd. The property owner, we've not spoke directly to that property owner, but because of the petition request, we made some alterations. There was an existing conditional use rezoning here 10, 15 years ago. There's a beauty shop already there. So there's already a small business that's located in the neighborhood along Hopple Road that is, you know, it's a very low-intensive type business, which is the same kind of operations that would be encouraged by this new zoning ordinance. You could do something similar. So it somewhat equalizes the properties down through there. Now, we, the petition did not have the signature of every property owner in the area. So we haven't heard whether or not they would want theirs restricted, but a, a large number of the owners and some of the renter, some of these are rental-occupied units, some of the renters have signed petition as well. So we, we propose this as a, as an alteration to the map that you consider.
Lee, on the little map that we're looking at, which I can see better than what's on the screen, we have the diagonal lines. Is that what is the overlay for?
Yeah.
So...
It's basically a protective overlay.
That has protected all of Conley Street except these two lots that are right there on the corner. Is that correct?
Right here on the, on the edge on Hopple Road.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And then on down Hopple Road, and you've explained that, so...
There's existing apartments on some of this already, so if you changed it, if you made it too restrictive, all of a sudden, you'd put other people in nonconforming status.
Right.
And as you might hear from some other folks tonight, there's, you know, that's a difficult situation when it comes to selling and financing the property. It, the nonconforming status really is intended to eventually remove it, to make it go away. It, it wouldn't become nonconforming if you didn't want it to kind of, it doesn't meet with the, the current goals of that area. So that's, that doesn't necessarily mean it has to go away today. It just means over time, over a long extended period of time, it tends to transition to another use.
So basically, what I'm seeing on this map is everything on Conley Street, with the exception of those two lots right on the corner...
Mm-hmm.
...are covered by the conservation. And then everything on Wilson is covered, except that one on the corner. And we've already made an exception for the beauty shop, which it faces Hopple, Wilson, no, it faces...
Well, it faces Wilson.
Wilson.
But the, the two lots that you mentioned excluded are actually Hopple Road lots, not, not Wilson or Conley.
But, yeah, so it's, it's almost a non-issue.
I think, hopefully, we've satisfied their request in this map change.
Does the speaker understand that, Lee?
Where'd he go? He's back over here. You understand? Okay. Next.
Thank you, Lee.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Pam Pickard, 309 East Concord Street. Okay, you say nursery schools are permitted in residential areas now, right? What if my neighbors wanted to open a nursery school? What chance do I have of stopping it? Because I don't want to listen to screaming kids in the morning and in the afternoon. I'm, I like my peace and quiet name up most of the time.
Do you have any indication there, Isma?
I'm going to have to look at the zoning there right quick, and we'll find out where she's, what she's zoned, and that'll help educate others about what can go on in their This is available online, by the way. If you'll go to the city's website, anyone can look at their properties and see what the current zoning is and what the proposed zoning is. And you can also look at the zoning ordinance. East Concord, 309. 309 East Concord is shown in an LID zoning classification. You just click on the map, and it pulls up the current zoning, proposed zoning. It's not under any kind of overlays. And then you can click on the bottom, and it'll take you right to the table of permitted uses in the ordinance. And you can look and see if it's a permitted use, what's permitted in the LID area. Anything with a P in the category is permitted use within that area of LID, as long as it's not in a neighborhood conservation area and within the conditions that are outside that are shown on that column. So you just go to this section of the ordinance, and it tells you how bona fide farms are permitted. Okay? So this was a, a family care? No, what?
She said nursery school.
Daycare, daycare. Okay. You want to address that then?
You might have to help me with the street. So that address was in an LID district. Daycare centers are permitted, but they're not permitted in a neighborhood conservation overlay. So this was not a neighborhood conservation overlay. It's also permitted with conditions. So if you go to 3.4.3A of the, of the ordinance, which I have turned to, it says those types of uses are only permitted on lot sizes of greater than 20,000 square feet, which is about half an acre. They, all structures have to be set back a minimum of 50 feet from any neighborhood conservation overlay, and those uses have to be on streets that meet commercial street standards. So I'm not sure about Concord Street specifically, but...
Concord would not fall within that category. So it's, East Concord is a residential street.
Mm-hmm. So in order for that use to be in that area, it would have to be on a street that meets commercial standards, which means that street would have to be brought up to those standards in order for that use to be there. Basically, that use would not be permitted in that specific area.
Now, now, Bowdys Avenue, on the other hand, you can see the road color changes over here, okay? It's a much larger street, wider, has more traffic on it than Concord Street does in this particular area. So that particular use, if your property fronts on Bowdys Avenue, then that's potentially a use that you could use your property for if you could meet the other standards and the protections around that property.
And those, those types of protections would include buffers, buffer yards, screening. They would have to have their, their parking. Of course, the lot would have to be big enough for the parking to be accommodated on-site. So there's several, several factors that go into whether or not a use could work on a property, but it all starts with whether it's permitted in the table or not.
Ms. Pickard, do you understand?
I do, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker. Nobody over here? Okay. Any others?
You still want to hear my pretty face? It's good.
Jerry, Jerry told me he got tired of writing, and he ended...
Okay. I'll make you a coffee.
Okay. I'll come by and get it. Anybody else? Public hearing is closed, council members. Let's decide on these three or four.
Is it an order, Mel, to take, I think, section 5.510, which is pennants and streamer, delete that? Just that one section? Would that be appropriate?
Lee?
That's one of those items that's not prevented out of the current ordinance that we're operating under presently, so the world wouldn't change if you did that.
I think procedurally, you would eliminate that section, and would you put them, and this might be a question for Aaron, would you put it over under permitted signs or not?
No, there'd be no need to.
Okay.
There'd be no need to do that. Remove it.
Just remove it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we remove it.
Second.
Ronnie, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Okay. Okay, Jerry, you can leave your streamer up.
All right.
You may want, you may want Lee to come up and talk about this a little bit.
The, the other property in question is the Coffee property.
Well, you've got two, the, two zoning, map issues, the Coffee property and the Wilson Drive.
Right.
Okay.
You want to deal with the map issues first and then go to the other issue?
Yeah, let's do.
Because Wilson Drive is also a map issue.
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
Both of those are map issues.
Would be considering whether you're wanting to amend it to be the map that you looked at tonight or the map that was presented originally.
I make a motion that we, we adopt the map that was presented tonight.
On the Wilson Drive area?
That is correct.
Here, second.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Okay.
Now, the, the conservation easement overlay on the Coffee property. I move that we remove that overlay.
On the, just the 27.9 acre, whatever.
Right, on the, on the Coffee Nursery property. Second.
I have a motion. That was your motion, John?
Yeah.
Okay. For a second. Any discussion?
We can put that man out of business if we don't.
Just to be, to be clear, that does not put him out of business. That it would be, it would make his property a nonconforming use, and as Lee was explaining, all that means, nonconforming use can continue indefinitely forever, as long as it doesn't change or stop being used in the way it's being used now.
Right. And, and I think that's what the Coffee family wants, according to Alan. Correct?
Well, they want, I'm just saying, if you left it with the overlay, that doesn't shut him down. That doesn't have any effect whatsoever on his current business. It definitely could affect the future use of the property, but it doesn't in any way. It's like any other nonconforming use. It just continues as long as it continues.
Yeah, any nonconforming use that this creates will not have to go out of business.
Thank you. Yes, I understand that very well, but my client is concerned with the value of the property going forward.
Future.
This is the only use of the property in the assault.
Right. Right.
That's, that's the issue.
And a little precarious to own a piece of property I've got under a nonconforming use, just as Mr. Anderson admitted earlier. So I'd ask you to...
Okay, we have the motion. We have the second. No other discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Okay. Aye opposed. Okay. What else, Mr. Attorney?
We need a motion to approve the zoning.
Well, unless you have some other issues you want to raise about the whole...
Package.
Why the package?
Mayor, I have, I have one issue that, that I'd like to present, uh, after being contacted by, by several people. Several people have a concern about the, uh, the length of time that campaign signs can, can be out prior to the day of election. The, the current ordinance allows for 30 days prior to the, uh, election. I'd like to recommend and place in the form of motion that the 30 days be extended to 45 days.
I think that is Section 5.3.10, is that right, Lee?
You make any kind of motion, Forrest?
He did.
Yes.
He did.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay.
That's 10 days. 10 days.
We still have some up from the last election.
The ordinance says 10 days.
The state statute allows for 10 days also. You have to come down 10 days.
Okay, all right, we, uh...
There was a question about what happens if they don't remove them. They're subject to fines and penalties. We can pick those up in the public right of way also after 10 days, which we do a lot of.
Okay, you need two motions, don't you, Lee?
Yes.
Motion to accept the...
Is that all? No more change? We don't have anything else?
Any more questions?
Sorry.
Motion to accept that the proposed zoning ordinance and proposed zoning map is consistent with the Comprehensive Mission 2030 Plan for the City of Morgantown pursuant to NCGS 168-383.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. We have a second motion, guys.
I make a motion to repeal and replace the current Morgantown zoning ordinance and zoning map with a new zoning ordinance and map, zoning map in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 168-382, effective January 1st, 2015, with the exception of relinquished extraterritorial jurisdiction, the ETJ areas, which shall remain under the current rules of map for a period of 60 days after the effective date or upon such earlier date that the County of Burke shall adopt zoning and land use regulations governing those areas relinquished.
Second. Have a motion, second. Discussion?
Question, what we decided to, tonight, the changes will be a part of that motion, correct?
Yes.
Motion second? Who's second?
Forrest.
Forrest second, okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay, Bill Parton, you get taken care of? Okay.
Lee, good job.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank the whole P and Z group.
Yes, sir, y'all did a great job.
Lee, Lee Anderson, can you take off the computer screen from the... Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing on, open a public hearing on the development incentive grant for Alpine Mill LLC.
Go for it.
Okay. It's probably me, rather.
All right, go ahead.
You all will recall that at your October meeting, the council approved the concept, anyway, of a developmental incentive grant agreement with Alpine Mill LLC for the property, the renovation property, uh, project at the old Drexel Plant 7 on East Fleming Drive. At that time, you had an application and a concept for a, um, a grant, but there was no formal grant agreement then available. Subsequently, a development incentive grant agreement has been prepared by our staff in conjunction with the county staff and Alpine Mill. And the county commission approved that agreement at its November 18 meeting. It's now coming on before you for consideration as public hearing on that grant, which would be a, that's laid out in your material, based on the increase in the value, tax value of the property provided by the developer. But you need a public hearing first.
Anyone wishing to speak for or against the adoption and approval of the development grant, incentive grant?
And I should say that Mr. Irwin is here from Alpine Mill, if there are any questions.
Close the public hearing, council.
Make a motion to adopt and approve the development incentive grant agreement with Alpine Mill LLC in the form of already approved by Burke County for a proposed mill renovation project at 109 East Fleming Drive, involving an estimated investment by the developer of $6,500,000.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay. Next item is consideration of a development agreement and approval of a contract with Senior Deaf and Blind Community, Sally.
At your November 3rd council meeting, you adopted a resolution of intent to ultimately sell the College Street property for the development of a Senior Deaf and Blind community, something that we've been working on now for months with that group. The new proposal was advertised. The new consideration was to allow that property to be sold in phases and allow that project to be developed in phases. We did advertise that for the 10-day period. There were no upset bids received. And so tonight, you're being asked to approve the contract for sale that handles the phasing of the project. And then associated with that is a development agreement, which goes through the details of the land sale and the development of the project and sets up rights of first refusal, if the project should cease and if the city wanted to buy back property, if the second phase was not sold, and those kinds of details. Those are the items that are in the development agreement presented to you tonight.
Thank you, Sally. I'll make a motion.
And may I interrupt one additional thing to clarify in the, it had originally been discussed, and I think it's what's presented to you in the documents, is that the contract and agreement are with Senior Deaf and Blind Community, Inc. At their request, we will change that to Senior Deaf and Blind Community LLC, which is an associated entity, and we'll need to change the names. Otherwise, there would be no other change in the agreement.
Okay. What are your wishes, members of council?
I believe we approve and enter into a contract for sale with Senior Deaf and Blind Community for 5.574 acres located at 500 through 502 South College Street, together with an option for three years to buy an adjoining tract of 1.2826 acres, together with the authority for the mayor and for the city manager to execute such contract and to make any necessary technical changes.
Okay, we have a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
All right, we have the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay. Have another one.
I move to approve and enter into a development agreement with the Senior Deaf and Blind Community Incorporated, including the property on South College Street being sold, which provides for development on the property of a residential retirement center focused on the deaf and blind, together with the authority for the mayor and/or the city manager to execute such agreement and make any necessary technical changes.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Very good. Got to work. Consideration of bids on sale of surplus property on North Green Street, Sally, an extra item, by the way.
It is, uh, laid before you tonight at your places. You recall on August the 4th, you declared a tract of approximately 1 acre of property, which is at 703 and 705 North Green Street, as surplus property, and entertained an offer for that property to be purchased. Since that time, there's been several offers, upset bids on that property. However, as the time has gone on and we have been able to understand more about the property, there is a large stormwater drain that's on that property that was located there to the best of our information sometime when the Green Street was widened and sometime between the redevelopment project and the final widening of the street. In light of all of that, it is the staff's recommendation, and we have talked to the folks who have been bidding on this property, that you do not sell this property at this time, that that is too much of a risk to sell a piece of property with that drain. And so we would ask you to reject the bids and undeclare the property as surplus.
Motion to reject any and all bids for the purchase of city-owned property 703 and 705 North Green Street and not proceed with the sale of that property at this time.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Okay. Anything for many of the council members? Sally? Thank y'all for being here tonight. Got a lot of work done. Meeting adjourned.